Good evening, everybody. It is the appointed time for our meeting has arrived, so I'll call it to order. Forum is present. And Claire is arriving. Welcome, Claire. And the first order of business is the approval of today's board meeting agenda. The motion to approve the agenda. And a second.
Okay.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the next order of business is public discussion. I don't see any members who look like they want to address the board, so. So we can move on to the items to be discussed. First of which is to appoint a committee to evaluate the library director. Thank you to DJ and Hannah and Claire for agreeing to serve on that committee. I don't remember, did I send one of you, Dan's excellent notes from last time around? Okay, so thereby you are in charge of convening the group.
DJ, you were on it last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you were for.
Well versed.
Yeah. And then as a board, we'll discuss that evaluation at February meeting. Thank you all for agreeing to serve. Next, we get to review some of our longer policies. Starting with 501, Authority for Administration of Personnel Policies for Library Employees. Discussion, comments about that policy.
I have in my hand.
Oh, my God.
Just suggestions. I don't think you want to hear them all, but I wanted to let you know that I'm proposing some changes.
Okay.
Not anything radical.
Editing.
Changes in phrasing and so on.
Okay.
So, anyway.
So I think. Question is, how do we approve the policy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To read it.
Yeah, we would have to consider those changes.
Either verbally now or if the board would prefer to add that to the mix.
I think the staff should have taken a look at them.
Yeah, I think there must be a way. Well, the easy way is, yeah, just accept the suggestions, go back through the policy, and we'll do it next month.
I don't think anybody's going to, I mean, you know, the changes of words just are influencing.
Yeah.
There's only one that might possibly be, and I can tell you about that.
Yeah.
I'll do it any way you want. I won't do it again, though. This really throws a bigger kink into the works.
Well, it's just a formality that when we approve it, we have to prove the words, you know. So. I don't see, it's not like there's urgency to this policy being reviewed.
No, December is the light policy.
Yeah. Yes. So are there other thoughts about the policy? Anyone else?
I'm amazed that we have a policy giving us permission to have policies.
Yeah. It's great. It's like a committee on committees, right?
Right on the mark.
Yeah. So, yeah, lovely. So let's defer this to our next meeting. We move on to the general library personnel policies. Which has just a very small change. And these policies are meant to mirror the city policy. So.
Do you know, is there anything that's different from what the city has that we would need to know about? Because I mean, this looks very typical government policy here, but is there something that?
The policies are, it will refer to the city or to the manager and those instances we changed those to the library and the library director. I would say this is.
Okay, but for.
So it's really just.
Really just a copy.
The part in the that we proposed to edit is not in the cities because they don't have library certification for that as an addition to it.
Otherwise, it's really just the city's policy.
Gotcha.
And we anticipate that there might be some changes to the city's policy coming up. And if that happens and we're proposing adoption, we will just bring it back through. But it didn't, it felt like the right thing to do was to review it on schedule and then bring it back. And we will study.
Yeah, there's a few other instances where like, we adopt city code which reflects state code. That's pretty much a finality, but we do a lot of finalities. Other questions about the general library personnel policy?
The section on certification that you referred to in your gen. Did the assistant city attorney review that also?
Yep. The review of the, I mean, it was a light review because there is a margin of review there.
Other questions or comments? Anyone like to move the adoption of 502 general library personnel policy?
I'm moving to adopt policy 502.
Exactly. All in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Well, unattended children. Policy 813. This is not one that comes down from our high, this is ours.
This is ours and the biggest changes are changing the age for unattended youths from under six to seven or under, so you need to be eight or older. That's done partially to align with Iowa City Transit's rules, which are that age can ride the bus unattended. We also benchmarked with Parks and Rec who have an older age limit, and we felt like this one would work for us. So we would make it consistent with transit and see how that works. This is a policy that especially Andrew's department looms on, I would say regularly. And it's just nice to have it spelled out. We tried to make all the changes as clear as possible. Not surprisingly, when this policy was brought out to talk to one of our caregivers, often in a relatively stressful situation. So we wanted it to be pretty easy to be understood.
Yes, suggestions or questions or comments?
Much more to the point.
I just wanted to ask about the, this is not usually my role, but I'm 813.5, but that's the right voice.
The reasonable accommodations.
Right, I mean, it's just, it sounds like it's a directive and not a policy, you know. I mean, the meeting, I agree with that, but the voice sounds inconsistent to me.
Is that the standard language that is on in all of them that put to reasonable accommodation?
So you're suggesting that reasonable accommodation can be requested?
Yeah.
Or should be, or should be addressed to the library director? Like, it's not the content, just.
Exactly.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Make it really policy-ish, you could say, if the library director may grant reasonable accommodations related to.
All reasonable accommodations should be set to the library.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't request for accommodations. Just it's like it's in a policy.
No, I think that's a great suggestion. I think we just have to nail down what the proposed changes are.
Request for accommodations for the library access. Are directed to. This is a personal. All requests.
You're our wordsmith. Where are you tonight? You're our wordsmith on this one.
Do that one. Are directed, is that what you? Please draw one.
I just, I'm just saying, I don't know, requests for accommodations are.
Requests for reasonable accommodations.
Well, reasonable sounds judgmental, like who's to decide it's reasonable?
I think.
I'd say we added a law.
I think it's.
Oh, okay, is it a law? Okay.
Requests, I think you're right, requests for reasonable accommodations should be, I think, are to be.
Yeah.
How about, should be directed to the library director.
Director. Yeah.
Cause I just declare it instead of.
Yeah, right, it just seems.
At command, right?
Yeah.
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 Other thoughts? Do the, you get to closing with a child that you don't have a caregiver for?
I would say not very often, but it certainly happens. Maybe a couple times a year. Andrew could answer with authority when that.
Yeah.
And sometimes if it's a regular patron and, I mean, it sort of has levels of how we would use this. And it's a little tricky because we close earlier sometimes than others. So that can be a pattern.
Right.
Anything else on this policy?
We did speak with legal at length about adding a section of this for vulnerable adults. And there just wasn't a, we didn't settle in a place that felt both fully reflective of a law and reflective of what we were intending to do with it. So I think that conversation will continue, but kind of like the earlier policy, we felt like reviewing it on schedule and then if we needed to bring it back with changes or to add a supplemental policy for adults, but we would do that in the future.
Whatever, vulnerable adults, I don't, it's not a term I've ever heard before.
That's one of the challenges, is it would be adults who are unable to make choices about sort of health and safety and safe use of the facility. But that was one of the issues that legal talked about was, are we equipped to make those decisions?
Yeah.
I mean, in some ways, I think we are all vulnerable adults, depending on the day and the time and the mood. So that was one of the issues was with age, we can say definitively, you are or are not in this category. With other complications, we are less equipped.
Yeah.
Is that primarily directed to like the closing time? Because otherwise, it sounds like it could fall under disruptive patrons. Like, there's a kind of a fine line there, because if we're talking about just someone who should be supervised for some reason, being disruptive in the library, and you're looking for a caretaker versus like, I don't feel comfortable with this person being on their own at nine o'clock when we're closing, you know, that's kind of two separate things. And so like disruptive patron policy or like library use policy might cover these adults. If it's a scene in the library, but it's different than not being comfortable locking the doors with this person unattended.
I think it's more that kind of category of event, or if somebody is clearly in need of medical care and is sort of refusing staff intervention. It would not be a case of we're looking around trying to identify people who might benefit from supervision and then taking action.
Yeah.
It would hinge on that.
Okay.
And we've had a few issues with young adult patrons who are well beyond the age of eight. But it can be difficult for staff to navigate if there's an issue. Do you try to reach out to like caregiver? Do you reach out to public safety? Do you call 911? Depending on the severity of what's going on. They're not everyday occurrences, but it was a great thought exercise. Me and I worked with legal for extended period of time, kind of going back and forth on it. And I think we may revisit it in the future, but it was helpful to walk through it and think more about what do we do in those instances where somebody is in need of some kind of help, but isn't interested in.
Right, and other, I mean, other libraries have the same situation. I mean, is there precedent for other policies that we could borrow from? In this conversation, I can think of a specific patron when I think of this. I'm at a different public library, which we all knew.
Yeah. We benchmarked with several other libraries that have adult inclusive policies. I'm comfortable with the idea of just applying the general library use policy because usually where it's going to come to a head is either, like you said, we're closing or there's a behavioral issue and we have very clear policy around the behavioral issue part of it. So we're typically able to navigate it. I think there would be benefit to having an additional policy that spoke to teens and adults, but the library use policy is robust and can be applied. So it's, I'm okay with letting this one to children. I think, like I said, we might revisit the idea in the future.
It seems like a hard one, but I do, I do see the, I have a good friend who earlier has dementia, wandered down here and, you know, really was not capable of going home from there. His family tracks his phone, so they took care of it, but if they didn't remain in a difficult situation, and he wouldn't have been able to tell you who to call, and he wouldn't have been willing to. Yeah. Well, shall we bring this to a vote? I guess I need a motion. DJ moves to the top.
I'm second.
Second from whoever you want to take down. Dan, they got there first. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Leads us to staff reports. Elseworth, you have anything to add or expand upon?
We had our budget check in meeting with the city manager's office and finance earlier this week. So John and Amy and I went and do sort of a soft line by line conversation about what was in our request. It felt like a healthy conversation. They had some questions, we had some questions. But we've been working really hard to add notes to the newest reports that we submit every year. So at this point, after sort of three years of building on it, we have descriptions for almost all of the lines that change year to year, which feels like it helps everybody because there's much less of the flipping back and forth to say like, okay, what does this printing line cover? Because we've added notes that say that. So I think that that work, which has been fairly tedious, has really paid off. And we really won't know the outcome of that conversation until probably late December or January, as far as what the next review of the budget will come through with finance numbers on it. And we'll let the board know how that looks. I do think that the city is having to make some tough, big picture budget decisions, looking at the rollback numbers and other tax information. So conversation went well, and we'll see what comes next. We weren't given any directives to re-leave with the reduction. That's everything sort of that's happened since then. The annual report that will feel familiar to those of you who have been on the board more than one year. It's an interesting document. We record a lot of statistics anyway. The annual report kind of puts them in a little bit different format. So I don't think there'll be any big surprises there, but John and I have worked very closely with this document and are happy to answer any questions that came up. I pulled out a few of the things that I thought were worth mentioning, but overall, it seems like what we'd expect. And then please note the in-service date and invitation. We'll send out the full plan for the day closer to, but know that you are very welcome to come for part or all, even if it's like, I must stop for lunch, that's great too, but no pressure. And I think we're going to have some good presentations this year that might be helpful.
Any questions for Elseworth? Right. We've got a documents report. Anything to add, Jason, or? About that, remember the flowchart.
I didn't enjoy that.
First time I adopted the flowchart technology. That's perfect. I wrote the paragraphs and I figured you were bored. I was bored by the time it finished, right?
So we got flowchart.
Yeah. Cause I thought it won't make sense if people understand.
So.
Yeah. Hopefully you understood the flowchart and that also.
I have very fond memories of my flowchart template for drawing flowcharts.
We're gonna share.
With.
We aren't.
No, no, this is a piece of plastic with holes in it. And lines to align things with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we did about 3,000 interlibrary loans last year, so you can imagine, two of those that must be contacted for returns. So we don't have a specific data about how much china is saved, but it's substantial, so.
Great project.
Lots of benefits to it. I was asking Amanda what else might be useful to explain, and she was saying, the cart, the pickup cart looks so neat. Before it was like handwritten, and if you had a bad penmanship day or, you know, just human error, writing the wrong, maybe you're spelling it wrong, sometimes people lost it. So it's exciting to see uniformity and labeling, nobody's excited.
So my question is, so the clipboard was at one time a clipboard?
I think it must have been, yeah. And then it was just, can you digitize this?
Uh huh.
Yeah, just make a database.
Cool.
It's pretty rudimentary, but it solves spoken, Todd's kind of a master. Give him a project and 20 minutes later it's solved.
Okay.
Should have asked him 10 years ago, this technology, but we got there eventually. And with a new ILS coming, potential, it'll get supplanted by.
Right. Any questions for Jason? Right, well, we can move on to Community and Access Services Department report. Sam is not here, right? But I'm sure if you throw out a question or a comment, Elseworth would be happy to do his best.
Yes.
I'm a little confused about the phrasing, food bank, library table, an average of 20 visitors per visit. I'm confused by, what is the visit? This is people who are stopping by or people who are at the food bank. I'm confused by just this phrasing and what, I love the idea of it and I got the gist, but I'm a little confused by what I thought.
I think what Sam's saying is there were an average of 20 visitors to each, each time they did outreach at the food bank.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Every time they were there, there were an average of 20 visitors.
Thank you, I wasn't quite processing that. And is that at community?
Is it, Kim?
Yeah. This is library part silent, but also just like information about services and fixing accounts.
Some adorable leaves with googly eyes, which I love. Just wasn't quite processing that, thank you.
Is that like a weekly-ish thing or? Let's see, like visitors per visit.
I don't think it's, they don't kind of have, maybe it's every others.
Anyway. Didn't know about that.
Weekly with the.
20 and 58. Yeah.
In terms of months.
Yeah. Shall we move on to the Development Department report? You started, I think that, I said the first time here. So the Arts and Crafts Bazaar will have a preview, great idea.
Thanks to Bonnie, who co-hosted a fundraising event.
Yeah.
In her neighborhood. It was, Katie and I really appreciated having a chance to connect with folks in a comfortable environment and talk about the library.
That is just fantastic, yeah.
All credit goes to Beth. Really, you know, I'm happy you have my name there, but she did all, she thought of the idea and she hosted it in her home. She, Beth is a member of the Friends Foundation Board. And she reached out to me and said, oh, I see you're on the library board, you want to co-host something. So.
And Joan DePringer is a retired Iowa City Public Libra, or Iowa City School District librarian. She did a lot of fundraising for Iowa City schools. It was instrumental in like that run for the schools piece, so I recognize that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Elseworth and Katie for coming. I think that added great opportunity.
You know, an air of legitimacy. You have a pocket ring on my.
I did just throw this, I got hit up for a fundraiser yesterday that I love. It's, I forget what they're calling it, but it's basically an event where you don't have to go to an event. You just stay home and scan a QR code, and it's like, don't have to go to an event. Not like in this. So that's our last report, right? Except for mine, which is only to report that, thank you again to the director evaluation folks. Are there any announcements from members?
Actually, I was curious if anyone else got a angry email?
Yeah, we all got that.
Okay, everyone got that.
Yeah.
Just curious if there is a response to that or if we just move on or just like. From Century Paint Farm.
Maybe I accidentally deleted it.
So it came through the Mimecast thing, which, yeah.
Right. And it must have been directly to the board addresses.
It was, yeah, it went to the board address.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and Tom and I talked about it. Because there was a request for a response or information, I didn't turn the response at all.
Okay, just curious.
And there's no signature.
Yeah, no signature, sure.
So, yeah.
I was just kind of wondering.
Yeah.
Not that we need to do anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate you checking in on it, Dan, too. I think it's.
Wasn't even on the board at that time. So I sort of.
Same. Get some of the details, right?
Yeah.
Not, not very on the board at that time.
I mean, it is just useful to remember that everything we do affects the whole public and it affects them in different ways. And this person didn't like the way things affected him. Worth noting, or her, I don't know. Anything else?
If folks didn't read the Corps of Business General article that's in the packet, I would encourage folks to. If folks didn't read the core business kernel article that's in the packet, I would encourage folks to. Amanda Ray, who, um, is a supervisor in our brand here, she and I spoke at a business launch event and, and Berklo followed up with Amanda. And I think that Amanda did such a great job kind of explaining the ways that I C P L supports these populations. And we're, we're optimistic about sort of a continued conversation with the, the business community about how do we amplify these services? So was pleased with that.
And Kelly, the librarian was one of our trustees.
I do apologize.
And that's not the reason.
Do any of the committees have anything you need to report advocacy or financing of the foundation members?
Nothing. You're not for a big advocate here.
Elsworth, have you got any glimmers of what items might be of interest to the legislature this year? You know, that relate to libraries or?
I think that, I mean, at, at this point, we're, we're watching to see what might be brought back from last season.
Last year's failures.
And, you know, a positive would be if the levy legislation was taken back. I think there was at least interest in a conversation last time it was brought forward. I think it will face an even tougher environment this year. So that would have been legislation to, to reinstate or to, um, allow special levies again. Of course, watching legislation like, um, four ninety-six around restrictions to materials to see if there's enough to expand this. Is, is top of mind. And then the library governance. I think that actually of all of those conversations that has the potential of being the most. Public libraries, um, and with the, um, the recent, uh, destruction in state library governance, um, I think that there's, that again, that's going to be a very complex environment and, and lead to some really tough conversations. At a national level, I think watching the future of I M L S and what funding will look like there. That affects different libraries different ways, but if funding was reduced or eliminated, the interlibrary loan program, the case that you spoke about and some other, other major functions would be immediately affected. But we don't know yet for a state level. I think that, um, you know, obviously we'll, we'll keep that conversation going with the board and see what comes of it. I'm hoping that some of the connections we made last year with legislators, that folks will feel comfortable reaching out to us with any questions or to get clarification on, on how things are done right now. So we'll see how it goes. And there was a meeting on Monday with I L A to speak about a few different future casting items. I haven't seen the reports out from that yet, um, but I'm assuming that, that some ones for the topics were discussed.
It was, and they had the, the levy system.
Levy, yeah.
We're early in the season, still.
Yeah.
The party's just beginning.
Right. Lovely way to think of it. I think that leads us to the consent agenda. I could entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Passes. And take, just take a look at the December items.
We're doing five oh one.
Right, five oh one, move there. And we'll do one oh three, membership and professional organizations. We've completed our business. Go ahead. But you're in the meeting. Thank you all.